Is the council already?
Yes, sir.
Um, would you ask if he wants to speak or only if the council has questions? He does want to speak regardless. Only this question.
Thank you.
I'm calling. All right.
We'll call this meeting to order. This is a regular city council meeting, as well as the Community Development Commission meeting, and the Buena Sanitation District meeting. And we'll begin by having the city clerk call the roll.
Yes, the record will show all members are present.
Okay. Uh, we're privileged to have with us tonight Harland Dunn, the president of the Kiwanis Club of Sunrise, who will be leading us in the pledge of allegiance and the invocation. Mr. Dunn.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing and tie your heads if appropriate. Oh God, in whom we live and move and have our being, thank you for the blessing of life today. We are the author of everything, you are the author of everything good and perfect gift, including the many privileges and freedoms we have in these United States of America, and for the opportunity to gather together to do the people's work. Let us ask for your help in giving our elected leaders the wisdom, the courage, the strength to make good decisions, as we are grateful to you for the time, energy, wisdom, discernment, strength, wisdom, and spirit that you give us. Heavenly Father, we pray for your protection and provisions for those men and women in our armed forces around the world. We are serving, you are serving admirably and in some cases making the supreme sacrifice. We pray for the victims of all those of 9/11, for the seventh anniversary is this Thursday, and the strength you need to help us get, move on. We pray for every children, the children of the world and of the nation, that we may help them all. Fill us with new hope, new strength, new faith, new courage, that we may win the battle for peace. Be swift to save us, dear God, before the darkness fails. In your gracious name I pray, amen. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Next will be the approval of the agenda. Are there any items to be added or deleted from the agenda?
Um, thank you, Mayor. There's one removal, and that's the P2, the presentation by Dan McAllister. That will be moved to February.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We did have a closed session just prior to the meeting starting this evening, and I'll ask the city attorney to report on the closed session.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. One item was discussed in closed session. It's listed on the agenda, CS1, and there's no action to report at this time.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have a new leader in our community, and we'd like to introduce him at this time, with Mr. Paul O'Neill. Would like to come up to the podium and introduce himself. Paul is the new executive director and CEO of the Vista Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Uh, I didn't know I was going to be saying anything, but I'll tell you that I know each of you well enough to where you know me well enough to know that when I say I'm really glad to be here, you know I'm telling you the truth. And I really look forward to moving forward with this council and representing your city. I love it. Councilman Campbell and I were talking about reincarnating ourselves, and it seems like we do it about every three years. Uh, this is my last reincarnation, and I'm glad to be here. And thank you for having me.
Well, we're pleased to have you with the chamber and to be able to work with you now in this official capacity, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we have one presentation to make this evening. It's a proclamation to Vista Fire Chief Gary Fisher declaring September 2008 as National Preparedness Month in the city of Vista. So, Mr. Fisher, if you'd like to come forward.
Chief Fisher. For emergency, you want to tell us a little bit about what we're doing here?
And for emergency preparedness?
Yeah.
Absolutely. We have a number of drills coming up, hopefully a countywide duck cover and hold drill, I believe is mentioned in the proclamation. And we have a large-scale statewide drill coming up in November, in addition to the training that we have going on as an ongoing basis.
Very good.
Thank you.
This is a proclamation from the entire city council, and it says, "Whereas the San Diego County residents have experienced the effects of various disasters, including severe winter storms, extreme summer heat, and devastating wildfires, or wild land fires, resulting in loss of life and damages costing hundreds of millions of dollars; whereas Southern California is currently experiencing prolonged, record-breaking drought and extreme fire conditions that highlight the importance of disaster preparedness, both at the individual and institutional levels; whereas the United States and the world continues to experience devastation from both natural and man-made disasters; whereas the loss of life and damage to property can be greatly reduced if appropriate emergency preparedness measures are taken before, during, and after a major emergency. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim September 2008 as National Preparedness Month. And be it further proclaimed that September 23, 2008, is declared as Duck Cover and Hold Day, and all persons are encouraged to participate at 9:00 AM by taking protective actions as if an earthquake had actually occurred. And be it further proclaimed that the mayor and members of the Vista City Council urge all persons to learn what to do before, during, and after major emergencies to mitigate injuries, loss of life, and property damage." There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it very much.
We will now go to oral communications. We have one gentleman that would like to speak. Under oral communications, Jay Lambert.
My name is James Lambert, host of Nightlights TV, Community Access, Sunday nights at 8:30. City council members, on May 15, 2008, justices in the state of California overturned the legal and traditional definition of marriage previously approved by over 4.5 million Californians, representing a 63 percent plurality here in the state, in the county of San Diego. This act of judicial tyranny will be contested this November with Proposition 8. By inserting the definition of marriage into the state constitution, Proposition 8 will allow people to once and for all decide if they believe marriage should be defined as between one man and one woman. Letting the people decide through due process is what democracy is all about. Proposition 8 will allow the people's voice to be heard over the voices of four elitist judges in Sacramento who overturned the majority vote of the people, over the voices of this state's liberal state legislators, over the voices of Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger, over the voice of Mayor Gavin Newsom of San Francisco, and over the voice of Barack Obama, who injected himself into California politics by opposing Proposition 8, over the voice of the state Attorney General Jerry Brown, who has changed the wording of our measure to create a negative impression of marriage, and finally, over the voices of radical opponents who say it is hateful to define marriage as between one man and one woman. City council members, I'm here today to ask each member of the city of Vista City Council to sign on to the marriage proclamation that should be before you, that created by the Campaign for California Families, which simply affirms your support individually for Proposition 8. I'm hoping that you will not choose to be silent on this issue. Please do not tell the people of Vista that you will not support an age-old institution that has been the backbone of society and the family by your silence. This institution, which represents and celebrates the union between one man and woman, has stood for over 2,000 years. The traditional definition of marriage has a supportive history in all the world's great societies, religions, and cultures. Proposition 8 will allow the people of Vista to speak like they did eight years ago. Proposition 8 will allow thousands of residents of this city to actively support traditional marriage. I hope you join them. Please vote yes on Prop 8.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll look at the proclamation or the petition that you signed and...
It's being presented to every city council.
Good, good. I wholeheartedly support it.
Thank you.
Um, next on the agenda is the consent calendar. We have had no requests, only if there's a question on item C5, but are there any items that you wish to pull? I guess we'll start with Mr. Campbell.
Mayor, thank you. I'd like to have a staff update on C9 regarding CDBG.
Mr. Lopez?
On C7, sir.
Okay, C7. Uh, Mrs. Ritter?
I just had a comment, a couple comments on C5.
Well, go ahead and make them.
Well, I just wanted to, um...
You want to pull it?
Yeah, I'll pull it and do it that way.
And Mrs. Gronke.
Uh, that's C2.
Okay, very good. Do we have a motion for the remaining, let's see. Yes, do we have a motion for the remaining portion of the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion for that.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. It's not ready yet. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, it's unanimous. The first item would be C5. We have someone that wants to speak, if only if there's a question. And Mr. Verdusco, did you wish to speak before or after the council discusses it?
I just wanted to know if there's any questions.
Okay, do you have any questions of him?
Not of him, well, not of him necessarily. I just, um, do you want me to go?
Go ahead.
Okay. My comments were because I used to, um, our business was in a building near here, and they used to have a lot of problems with, you know, trash from food trash in the parking lot. I actually have eaten at your restaurant before, and so I just wanted to be sure that, um, you know, the parking lot is continuing to be cleaned up from trash. And then also, my other concern was on the noise, because you're asking for cabaret license and music, and so maybe with the noise outside, maybe the doors could be shut so that the music doesn't go into the neighborhood and the park is behind you and things, so that would be my... Can I add that to the, how do I do that?
Are you asking to add that to the conditions?
Can I do that?
You certainly may.
Would that be okay? Okay. I'd like to add that to conditions, if that's okay with the rest of my council.
Any other comments, questions? I'm sorry, Ms. Lopez?
Yes.
Question. In the restaurant, do you serve the Coronas in a...
Mr., would you please come to the microphone?
Just yourself. Tell me about your restaurant. We want to know. Come on.
Mexican restaurant. Yes, my name is Rafael Verdusco, and I own and collaborate with Mexican restaurant.
Uh, in your restaurant, do you serve the beer, the Coronas, the small ones, in buckets?
We will serve that, because that's what we're applying for.
You will serve that?
I mean, we're applying for the license to...
You're applying, but is that one of the things that you'll be doing?
Uh, yes, it's part of the idea, yeah.
Well, in our, that's not in the condition, is it? No.
I don't recall that.
Well, I would, I'm sorry, but this is one of the conditions that I would like to see here, is that, is that you not allow the Coronas in buckets, because there's no control on who is drinking and how many they're drinking, so I, I'm in the same business, and I feel, I feel bad about this, but thing is, I know...
No, I mean, I'm willing to, willing to.
I know what happens in certain restaurants, you know? And so, that is one of the conditions I've always said with every restaurant, that that's come in front of us...
I agree with you.
That it should be that way, in my opinion, because there's a better control on what goes on.
It's stated in the conditions, the very last item, bullet point...
I just couldn't see it here.
Self-service of alcohol is prohibited, including refrigerated coolers and buckets of drinks and ice available prior to the customer's order of such.
Okay, it was the last one. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Buenas suerte.
So then with those things, I'd make a motion for approval.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. I'm sorry?
I would just, with those two conditions added.
Yes, with the conditions added. Okay. Anyhow, it, all those in favor, please raise their hands. All those against, please raise their hands. Mr. Gronke is voting no. Okay, next item would be C7, which is no parking zone on Crescent Drive.
I would like to have a report on that.
We will have a staff report. Mr. Pierce.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Larry Pierce, Director of Engineering. I'll have Sam Hessenin, Principal Engineer, give you a report.
No parking on Crescent Drive. Just a little bit of information about the streets. Crescent Drive is a two-lane local road, 25 miles per hour speed limit. It's got about 4,314 vehicles per day. Pezzanish Circle is a cross street. It's a private road, serving about 12 homes. The issue with the parking at the intersection is that vehicles parked on the southwest corner block the visibility for traffic coming out of Pezzanish Circle.
You have to go left?
Yes, maybe if I, I'll show the aerial here. So, there's Crescent Drive, the main road, and Pezzanish Circle is a crossroad. If you see the proposed no parking zone, if you're pulling out of Pezzanish Circle, looking to your left, a vehicle parked where the proposed no parking zone is would block visibility for approaching traffic on Crescent. So, that's for that reason, if we took out that much parking, which is just one parking space, that would bring the side distance to the minimum required, which is 150 feet.
Your question, Mr. Lopez?
Uh, does that land where you're actually, uh, does the person on 835, how far does their land go out? How much, how much land do you actually own there? The right-of-way?
The frontage, oh, the city's right-of-way?
That red is there, is that your right-of-way?
It is, yes. There's a dirt area beyond the pavement that's within the public right-of-way.
So that's the public right-of-way?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, that was it.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you please try it again? Cast your votes. Well, it appears as though we're out of range again. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Okay, that passes unanimously. Next, we'll go on to, I guess we're having technical difficulties tonight. Next is C7, which is, no, that's what we just did. Okay, the next one would be C9, which is the Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Mr. Rawlins?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Bill Rawlings, Director of Redevelopment and Housing. And tonight we have a short presentation on this from Cecilia Berendar, Management Analyst.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight you're being asked to accept the 2007-2008 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, commonly known as the CAPER. This document is a required element of the Community Development Block Grant Program. To be able to utilize the federal CDBG dollars, cities must develop a five-year consolidated plan on housing and community development needs. In addition, each year the city must adopt a new one-year action plan and a CAPER report evaluating progress made on meeting the five-year housing and community development goals. The 2007-08 CAPER is reporting on the fourth program year of the consolidated plan. Highlights over the last year include 43 households receiving rental assistance, 13 households receiving housing rehabilitation assistance, more than 17,188 people receiving social services through the CDBG public services, 66 new full-time equivalent positions were created in Vista Village, and VTCP, or Vista Townsite Community Partnership, provided economic development programs that included 269 residents receiving one-on-one job assistance, 110 people participating in the English as a Second Language classes, and 51 residents receiving job placement assistance. This concludes staff presentation. Mr. Rawlins and I are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell, you had questions?
Well, Mayor, I just say, I think this is such an important benefit for the community, and I wanted to thank staff for their diligence in working with the committee on CDBG allocations that make these funds available for community institutions, but then also the fact that we follow through and make sure they're actually truly providing the benefit, as opposed to just signing checks and mailing them out. So, I understand from some I've talked to that you do an outstanding job there, and I appreciate that, and just wanted to let the community know, this is very, very important function of the city, and we appreciate your work.
Over the years, the city has received considerable dollars from the Community Development Block Grant Fund, and a lot of improvements, as well as social services have been, have been aided by this, this Community Development Block Grant, and I certainly hope that with the economy and with everything else, that the federal government will continue to utilize this program for a long, long time, because I think it's vital to local governments. Mr. Campbell, would you like to make a motion?
I'd be delighted to. I'd move for approval.
Oh, Mrs. Ritter has something to say.
I just have a comment on, in reading through here, the American Dream Down Payment Initiative and that program, you know, I know as realtors that were told at the end of September, the new federal rules say that there is no more down payment assistance, and so I don't know if that will affect this program and some of our things or not. That might be just something that you would want to check into. That was just a comment when I was reading through here, and then, and I don't know how accurate this has to be, this report, because, you know, a lot of, some of the things that says in here are, you know, the, it refers to the increasing prices and things like that, you know, significant increases in real estate and construction costs, and I know that that's, you know, not necessarily true anymore, so I don't know, I mean, I don't know how truthful this, there's a few things in here that...
I would just make the comment that the data does lag, and so it is reflective of, we don't have the most current up to... Yes.
Even last year, you know, it was a declining market all over, and so I just was kind of reading through here, and like, and it was also talking about one of our impediments was condo conversions, and I don't know that we're even having any recently in the last couple of years, and so I don't know how close you have to have this, this report, but just...
We'll certainly review it and make sure that it is accurate and reflective of the most up-to-date information that we do have.
You can call me if you want, too. I have a few little things in there I'd like to...
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments from the city council? This isn't working all that well, so I'm going to ask that question. Is there any other questions then? Okay. Then, would you like to go ahead and make your motion?
I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Try it again. Okay. Does it show it on that, the screens and the other? Okay, all those that are in favor, please raise your hand. And, okay, so that's unanimous. C9. Okay, well, next we'll go to the discussion items. The first discussion item is D1, which is the Grapevine Road Phase 2 Street Improvements Project. Mr. Pierce.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Larry Pierce, Director of Engineering. Phase 1 Grapevine Street Improvement Project was completed in 2006. That project is reflected on your screens as the areas in blue, which was replacing most of the sidewalks, actually, needed a new sidewalk, mostly on the west side, to improve the pedestrian safety to Grapevine School. We also did some safety measures.
Oops, thank you. Sorry. And those were including a four-way stop at Grapevine and Jonathan, which is right at the bottom, the right edge of your screen, a three-way stop sign at Grapevine and Moon, which is, oh, I lost it. Where is it? Oh, that's right, yeah, they're far left. And electronic traffic calming signs, they're the VCOM signs that we put down like on Shadow Ridge Drive at, in the Shadow Ridge. And then we did pedestrian crosswalk in front of the school and put the in-ground flashing lights for that crosswalk. We're now ready to do Phase 2. The missing sections on Phase 2 are in green, which are the sidewalk sections along the east side of the roadway from Olive to Date. After the design is approved, then we are ready to go to bids. Matt Adaberry, one of our engineers, has the plans here, and we're ready. The other thing that we need to do is to call some, two liens. In the 1970s and 1980s...
1970s.
1970s, okay. The city allowed developers to defer construction, and as a result, we have several liens. The two liens that are in this prop, on this stretch of roadway are 865 and 863. They had an option to pay the, pay an equal fee for the improvements at that time, or agree to pay for the improvements when they occurred. Both the owners have been notified, and we have contacted them directly, and they have been told that they have the three options to have the work done by themselves, pay off the lien, or have a lien on their property that will be paid off at the time of refinancing or sale of the property.
Were they notified of the meeting this evening?
Yes, they were. And they have both agreed to enter into the reimbursement agreements already, the repayment agreements already. The value of the improvements for what you see in green is about $750,000, and the two pieces that you see at 865 and 863 amount to about $46,000. And that concludes my report.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Gronke?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. When I look at this illustration, I notice, thank you so much, I notice on these properties and adjoining properties to the right of them, it appears that the improvements are going to go onto their property?
Uh, the two pieces to the south of the two pieces that we just spoke about have our, we have had to buy property from them.
Okay.
They're not liens, so we've actually purchased the property from them already.
Okay. And then, and you said something about a crosswalk by the school, so you've informed the school of where that crosswalk's going to be, and they agreed to that?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Okay, you said that there's going to be a crosswalk by Grapevine School?
No, there's, we already placed one there as part of Phase 1.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Would anyone care to offer a motion?
Uh-oh.
Okay, Mr. Gronke, do we have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ritter, thank you. No further questions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so everyone's in favor, so that's unanimous. Okay, next is discussion item number D2, which is the Sandag Smart Growth Concept Map. Mr. Conley? Mr. Conley?
So John Conley, Community Development Director. We're honored tonight to have Susan Baldwin with us, who's a Senior Regional Planner for Sandag. She's going to present the Smart Growth Concept Map. And Vicki Parker, our Principal Planner, will follow her up with a brief presentation about what it means to Vista.
Hi. Good afternoon, thank you for inviting me here. I'm going to talk a little bit about the, some of the work that led up to the Smart Growth Concept Map and some of the tools that Sandag has put together and is working on to help implement smart growth in the region. And I did bring some copies of our most, the most recent version of the Smart Growth Concept Map that are right there, and you're welcome to take one if you like, and there's some for the audience as well. I'm going to talk about the Smart Growth Concept Map, or the Regional Comprehensive Plan, the Smart Growth Concept Map, and the toolbox. And, oops, I'm going to remember to use this. Oh, I'm using, I'm going the wrong way, sorry. Okay. As all of you know, Sandag works with eighteen cities in the jurisdiction and the County of San Diego. We do not have Land Use Authority, and we're not a regulatory agency. So Land Use Authority, as you know, rests with each of the local jurisdictions. So, just to give you a little bit of background about why we decided to put together a Regional Comprehensive Plan, or RCP, this slide shows you that the San Diego region grew significantly between the nineteen-seventies and 2005, and it continues to show that we will continue to grow out into the future. This shows what, that we will, we're planning to, or we think we're going to grow by about a million people, four-hundred-and-fifty thousand jobs, and almost three-hundred thousand new homes. This slide portrays the land use and transportation connections in the San Diego region from a geographic perspective. And most of the development, as you are probably aware, is in the western third of the region. And most of the eastern, two-thirds of the region is either public lands or oftentimes has environmental constraints that make it undevelopable or is very low density. Therefore, our challenge is to plan for smart growth in the areas that are primarily shown in yellow and connect them to our existing and future transportation network. Another thing that we're going to be dealing with in the future is that the aging of our population. As the baby boom generation grows older, we'll see more than a doubling of the population sixty-five years and older in the region. And that will have a lot of implications with respect to transportation and land use decision-making. As a result, the need for a comprehensive plan is identified, and the RCP is regional, and it brings together all the plans and planning issues of the eighteen cities and the county, and covers a variety of topics, as you can see on this slide. And it's based on, there are kind of two underlying principles that underlie the RCP, and that is sustainability and smart growth. And the RCP was adopted in 2004. The RCP advocates three basic principles: better connecting transportation and land use plans, using those transportation and land use plans to guide infrastructure and environmental investments, and focusing on incentives and collaboration to implement regional goals. So now I'm going to talk a little bit about the Smart Growth Concept Map. It's a key implementation action of the Regional Comprehensive Plan, and it was adopted in 2006, and we just recently adopted a technical update to the, to the Smart Growth Concept Map. And it is kind of the foundation for identifying where smart growth is planned, where infrastructure investment should occur, and where the region should focus its financial incentives to promote smart growth. And this map is also going to be used to determine eligibility to participate in our upcoming Smart Growth Incentive Program that's funded through the Transnet Program, the half-cent sales tax. What do we mean when we say smart growth? This slide pretty much defines, gives you Sandag's definition of smart growth: compact, mixed-use development, good design, walkable, more travel in housing choices, and protecting open space and habitat areas. With this definition in mind, the Regional Comprehensive Plan identified or recognized that smart growth is not a one-size-fits-all approach. And the RCP identified seven smart growth place types, ranging in intensity from the metropolitan center, which is downtown San Diego, to the rural villages in the unincorporated areas of the region, such as Ramona, Fallbrook, Alpine. This is the copy of the Smart Growth Concept Map, and it contains two-hundred smart growth locations with at each, at least one area in each jurisdiction. And one thing I want to emphasize is that we worked very closely with all of the local jurisdiction staff in putting this map together. All the sites that were identified were agreed to by the local staff, and we didn't put anything on here that people were not comfortable with. We have both plan, existing planned smart growth areas, and that means that those areas meet certain transit and land use density targets that are in the Regional Comprehensive Plan, either on the ground or what the planning allows for in the local plans. Potential areas are those areas where there need to be, either transit needs to be planned for those areas, and it isn't in the, currently, or that those areas do not meet the land use targets, which is the predominant case. So those are areas where there is potential for additional density in the future. And we have some visualizations that I'm going to show you later, and these are the locations of those visualizations that we've put together. I'm going to run through these really quickly. These are just slides kind of giving you an idea of what the different areas are: metropolitan center, urban center, with examples La Mesa and University City; town center examples, Escondido, National City; community centers, which is the, that's the place type that we have the most of, Otai Ranch and Palomar Trolley Station; rural villages, Ramona and Fallbrook; and mixed-use transit corridor, which is mainly areas which have, that are linear in nature and have very high-frequency bus service, local bus service. This is University Avenue in San Diego. And then special use centers are generally universities or major employment centers where hospitals are that, and they, this example is San Diego State University, where of course the trolley goes underground and serves the campus directly. We also have put together sub-regional maps that, so you can get a little more detail that show the areas and their geographic, their size a little bit better. And those are, we have maps for North County and the middle of the county and South County. And now I'm going to talk a little bit about our Smart Growth Toolbox. And the purpose, again, of this is to provide jurisdictions with tools to help implement smart growth. And the, one of the tools is an outreach program, which I'm, you know, doing right here. So thank you for inviting us. And then we also have a web-based Smart Growth Concept Map that I'm going to talk about. I'm going to actually talk about each of these very briefly, the ones that are highlighted in yellow. The web-based map is, has been placed on our website, which enables you to go in and select a jurisdiction and then select any of the locations that have been identified on the Smart Growth Concept Map. And then you can see through picking that location, which is the downtown Escondido, you get information about where it is, whether it's existing or planned, the type of, place type it is, and a description of that area. So we have that for each of the two-hundred place types. And then we have some more detailed maps and reference, or Google Earth and aerial maps as well. The next tool that we have is called iPlaces Sketch Model. And iPlaces is an internet-based planning program that's designed to present, provide communities with an opportunity to develop and evaluate alternative land use scenarios. And iPlaces allows communities to look at these different land use scenarios and determine how many employees are, if you look at a different land use scenario, an alternative to what's there or what's in the plan, you can see how many additional employees, how many additional dwelling units you may, you would, would gen, those different alternatives would generate. And you can see it graphically as well. And we worked actually with your staff, closely with Vicki Parker and Russ Cunningham, on a pilot project in Vista along South Santa Fe, or Santa Fe, North Santa Fe, I'm sorry. And that was to help work on looking at different land use alternatives for that area. And the visualization tools is something we're really excited about. This is a tool that we've developed with the assistance of a consultant, and we chose eight locations throughout the region to do visualizations in to show people what smart growth looks like. And each of these visualizations is going to be, able to be seen on our, if you click on the Smart Growth Concept Map on our website, you'll be able to see these visualizations. I don't think it's set up quite yet, but it will be. And there are eight 2D visualizations. I'm going to show you three of them tonight. And then there are three 3D visualizations that are animated that are not finished yet, but are in process. And so the point of this is to help show what, what can happen to an area if smart growth is implemented, if design, pedestrian improvements are made, landscaping improvements are made, you bring in mixed use, you bring in more outdoor areas, you create a sense of place. And this shows you the difference between the existing land use and the planned, what could happen in the future. And these are conceptual. We did work with the cities on trying to incorporate any planning that they were doing. So if there were any buildings that were being proposed at the time, we incorporated those into this work. And there's a gentleman, Steve Price, who's a consultant with Urban Advantage, who put these together for us. And we're trying to, we're working with him to offer that, that assistance for local jurisdictions through our Service Bureau. So jurisdictions can, can work through us to get these visualizations done in their areas. This one is Bario Logan, it's a community center. If you're familiar with where Chewie's Restaurant is, or was, the red brick building in the middle is Old Chewie's Restaurant. And it's kind of an industrial area. It's very near the trolley. The trolley is to the left, about a block or two away. And there are, you know, pedestrian, design improvements added, street trees. They're all pretty much, you know, the same. I mean, they don't look the same, but some of the same changes were made with residential and mixed use added in. And you can kind of see how much different the area looks and how, I think, beneficial it can be to an area to make some of these kinds of changes. And this is the last one I'm going to show you. This is Imperial Beach. It's a mixed-use transit corridor, so this is maybe of particular interest to you because of the changes and the planning that you're doing along Santa Fe. This is Old Palm Avenue and Second Street. And you can see some of those, the sidewalk improvements and the crossing improvements are improvements that the city is working with a consultant on, so we added those in. And you can see an outdoor eating area, bike lanes added, and the difference between the two. We're also working with a consultant on preparing design guidelines that can be used by local jurisdictions. We already have a set of design guidelines about, called Planning and Designing for Pedestrians that's available. It's a reference tool. And we're also creating guidelines for smart growth in general that will go beyond just the pedestrian guidelines to help jurisdictions when they're evaluating and planning for smart growth. These are just some examples. Then the Smart Growth Incentive Program is a very important tool. This is our incentive-based tool. This, we have set aside in the Transnet ordinance, there were $280 million set aside for smart growth. This is the first time that local funding has been made available for smart growth. And actually, the bike and pedestrian, $280 million that's been set aside may also be supportive of smart growth as well. The Smart Growth Incentive Program is being developed right now. It is going, we're going to have a call for projects probably late this year, in November or December, with awards made in early next year. And the capital improvements will be available, or capital projects will be available for existing or planned smart growth areas, and planning grants will be available for the potential areas. So if a jurisdiction wanted to look at different land uses and different transportation options through a specific plan, this money would be available for jurisdictions as long as it was targeted towards a smart growth area on our map. So that is the summary of our, the toolkit that we're putting together. And if you have any questions about this, I'd be happy to answer them. And I know that Vicki is going to talk about the smart growth areas in, that are specifically, have been identified in the map, on the map in Vista. Thank you.
Okay, first of all, are there any questions that any council member has? Okay, Vicki?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. We wanted to just briefly summarize the locations that have been designated in Vista and kind of explain the reasoning behind their choices. The, as Susan mentioned, the map was updated in 2008, and staff recommended one change over what was designated in 2006 on the original map. So of the list, sites one through four, six and seven, where, no changes were made to those. Those were on the 2006 map, and they continue on the 2008 map. Location number five had previously been a community center, and we asked it to be altered to a mixed-use transit corridor, and I'll go into that a little bit in a moment. Just briefly, of the seven different place types that are identified in the Smart Growth Program, we have three different types in Vista. I've just repeated the characteristics right out of the qualifying information that Sandag put together. We have one town center, Vista Village and Downtown, Historic Downtown. We have the four remaining community center types. These are ones that we thought would develop as something with low to right, this, excuse me, the low to mid-rise office commercial and proximate residential uses. And they're also served by either transit center or local high-frequency transit service. So you can see there, the court facility in general, I think everyone's familiar, the East Vista Way and Foothill location, if you recall, there was a live-work project approved at that location, and it is a node of commercial activity with surrounding residential. West Vista Way, we're anticipating that, there also was a project approved there, although they haven't gone forward with their construction drawings. We are expecting that that area will infill with residential development. And I know there's, with the general plan process right now, we're trying to look at regulatory changes we can make that will change the uses out there gradually over time to something more resident and freeway-serving. And finally, the Escondido Avenue Sprinter Station. And the third type that we have represented in Vista is the mixed-use transit corridor. And as Susan mentioned, planning staff had applied for and was, was granted a technology grant to do this modeling, which we wanted to do in advance of the general plan work or to supplement the general plan work, so that we could look, we had already looked at build-out numbers on South Santa Fe and had an idea of what infrastructure changes would be necessary there. And we wanted to do the same with North Santa Fe, understanding that there, that designating the whole corridor would open up greater funding opportunities. So with the iPlaces modeling tool, we did identify some infrastructure needs that we'll have. We were also able, as Susan mentioned, to look at jobs, growth, and not only numbers of jobs, but quality of jobs, whether they're retail or office jobs, and future housing units. So that was a really good exercise for us to, to help us decide that, yes, indeed, it should be a corridor designation. should be a corridor designation, as well, of course, as the proximity to the transit service, transit center. And then, of course, our second mixed-use transit corridor is South Santa Fe. We feel both of those areas meet the criteria. And just as briefly, the reasoning behind our decisions of those locations, again, were to begin to create places in Vista, recognizable places that focus the higher-density development near activity zones, job centers, civic facilities, shopping, et cetera, that are served by transit service, so that we can allow the outer-lying areas to remain less dense as we build out. And again, additionally, we need to provide sufficient inventory of appropriately-zoned property to meet our general plan build-out projections. Preliminary numbers right now are around 5,000 units that will have to, 5,000 units total that will have to increase densities to accommodate at least a portion of those. So with the general plan and the housing element, regional share allocations, we know that we have insufficient inventory at this time of appropriately-zoned properties. And with the climate change laws in effect, and SB 375 has been approved by the State Senate, I'm sure you've heard, and that is an implementation tool that ties land use and transportation and the monies, and prioritizes funding monies to those locations that are exhibiting smart growth. So finally, we thought that it would, these designations would make us more competitive for these funding opportunities, as we've noticed that there's an increasing focus, sort of all levels of government to, on higher density than we currently have right now, as well as mixed use and transit, proximate to transit facilities. And most of those facility, or excuse me, most of those funding sources are requiring consistency with regional blueprint plans. So we'll be coming forward to you with the general plan, staff-proposed land use changes, hopefully in the next 60 days, that are in concert with the locations that you've seen here tonight, so that we can move from potential to existing plant. And that concludes my presentation. We're both available to answer any questions.
Okay. Council questions? Mr. Gronky?
Yeah, a question of Ms. Baldwin. You know, I sit on the comprehensive planning committee with you. And I just wanted to, clarification. We've already decided on increased densities along our corridor. We've already made, agreed to that. And we already have two Sprinter stations capping off that corridor. Is there anything else that we need to do as a council in order to, you know, get these incentives that you spoke about? And also to take advantage of some of the economic incentives that are brought in by the Transnet money?
I can partially answer that. And Susan, may I want to jump in? One of the actions that we need to take on South Santa Fe is the adoption of the specific plan. But the funds are typically tied to a project. So as soon as we adopt the specific plan and have an identified project that's ready to go, we would be more competitive.
So we have to wait until our infrastructure needs are taken care of before we can put a plan on the ground that you can, we can then take to Sandag?
Well, if you have a plan, if there are certain projects that you have that are in association with a development, those are the types of projects that are eligible for funding.
I see Mr. Conley up there.
I'm just waiting to add if I need to, but to kind of build on that, we expect to be able to use those funds for infrastructure improvements too, once the plan's adopted. And it will identify what those infrastructure needs are.
Okay.
But the plan's a key piece.
Fair enough. How about, how about the redevelopment project that we have at the corner of Vista Way and Santa Fe? Is that too late for this process or no?
You're speaking of the demonstration block?
Mm-hmm.
That project is going to be partially funded by some redevelopment money, but I think that project could be eligible for some funding. They haven't submitted an application yet, but as soon as they do, we can look into the eligibility of that project for Sandag monies.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Baldwin, I need your help. Looking at your Smart Growth Concept Map, and I'm not questioning it, I'm just trying to understand it. In San Marcos, you have an urban center. And I'm trying to differentiate what an urban center means in the context of what I know we've been doing in Vista for Vista Village. But I'm not sure I understand what an urban center is in the context of San Marcos's plans.
Well, an urban center generally has a bit of a higher density, the densities assumed. I'm sorry, I didn't bring.
That's all right.
Bring it with me. But there are densities associated with each place type for employment density and for residential density. And so the metropolitan center has very, you know, extremely high densities, like 75 dwelling units and above. The urban center has, I believe, 45 to 75 dwelling units per acre. And then the town center is at, actually, the town center and community center are at 20 dwelling units per acre. So it's, 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 you know, it's related to densities, and it's also related to kind of the type of how you see your, the area developing in the future. And I guess, I think San Marcos saw the area that's the urban center in their community as developing in a way that was dense enough to merit, or that they decided they wanted to identify a town, I mean, an urban center. So, I mean, it, you know, it's not an exact science. You know, we, we talked to different jurisdictions. I think, I think any of the, any of the North County cities could have had an urban center, but it kind of, it's reflective of what kind of intensity of development you're visualizing for the future in those areas.
Okay. And then just restate, you said urban center was like 45?
Yeah, I believe that's the, that's the low end. Yeah.
Okay. We only wanted that in Judy's neighborhood, not mine.
That's really high.
Mr. Conley?
We kind of missed the boat on that when we built Vista Village, because it doesn't have any residential units in it.
Oh, that would have made a.
It would have made a difference in what we could designate that area.
Okay. And saying this in a rather crass way, but when it comes to playing for the carrot, the stick dollars, does it make much difference? It's based on quality of project or how, is it a competitive process?
I don't, yes, it's a competitive process. I do not think we're making, we're not creating pots for different place types. I don't think we are. I haven't been as close to that process. But we do have a fairly detailed list of evaluation criteria that have to do with density and, you know, go beyond just what you see. I mean, it's trying to make sure that the projects that we fund most closely or to the greatest degree possible achieve the objectives of smart growth.
Sure.
So I don't know if that answers your question.
And then just consistent with what I see Sandag doing is looking for, asking for applications or input, and then ranking according to criteria.
Right.
Do you see that process being followed here on a region-wide basis or sub-region? Or how do you, how do you think?
I think it's going to be done regionally.
So regionally?
Yeah. I don't believe we're doing it sub-regionally.
And it will do rankings and that type of thing to.
Right.
To see where projects fit.
Right.
Okay. Well, as Sandag always has a very fair, objective process.
Yeah. And there has been, there was an ad hoc subcommittee that was created of the planning directors and public works directors. And they've been working for the past probably six months on the criteria. So, and the regional planning committee's heard some of the initial discussions on that. So, and the board too, right. So it's going to go to the board, I believe, in November, the final criteria, so.
Lastly, just for clarification, please, and it's probably Ms. Parker or Mr. Conley, as to South Santa Fe, this has always been something we've been wanting to see move forward. Is it included here? You mentioned it, Ms. Baldwin, as having been discussed earlier, but.
It is.
Where is it in the scheme of this?
It is included. It's, it hasn't changed from our 2000, it was designated in 2006, and it's still in there at 2008, for the 2008 update.
So the new section we're talking about as North Santa Fe was why it was, that was called out today?
Right.
Okay. And Ms. Baldwin, are your, are your slides available online? You gave an excellent presentation, but there's a lot of things I'd sort of like to go back and look at.
Yeah. I think that the, I'll double-check on that, but I think it is online, yes.
Okay. If not, maybe you could make that available through Ms. Conley or Ms. Parker.
Yeah. Well, actually, they definitely, they have it available here.
Thank you.
So, yes.
If I could add one thing to your question, a bit of information, some of the criteria for qualifications are number of affordable housing units included. So because of the subsidies required, often the more dense, the larger in general projects have an edge that way because they can more easily qualify. So that is one way that density is rewarded, so to speak.
There's clearly more emphasis statewide and certainly in limited resources available, having to look at what are the best benefit programs. So I'm sure we're looking at that.
Ms. Ritter?
I was just going to jump in on the criteria. And I know that we saw it as board members at Sandag, I think we approved some, it's been there a couple times. Part of it is they have a whole set of criteria that you have to meet. And part of it is, you know, whether your project is ready to go.
Right.
You know, if there's matching funds, you get extra points for certain things, and then, and then they, then it ranks it by that. So I was just going to jump in on that, on that part of it. But I, I don't have that criteria here. I didn't, I didn't think about bringing it.
Right. It's pretty, it's pretty detailed.
Yeah, it's pretty detailed, how they rank it, so.
And I think the higher the density, obviously, you get more points too. Right. Right.
Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. So you're saying that the, like the Santa Fe corridor, when we start developing that into, since we've changed the density there, that it's a lot more beneficial to our community as higher density? And then it, then the, actually, the name actually changes here in the urban instead of the towards the town, town center? It changes? Would it change when we start developing?
No. That designation is based on what we expect to develop at.
Expected to develop.
Correct.
Yeah. So is it beneficial so that when we start that increasing the density to our community?
Yes, it does. Because of so many funding sources being tied to consistency with regional plans, it's of extreme importance that, that our planning is consistent with what is identified in the regional transportation plan and the regional comprehensive plan. So that was one of the reasons that we wanted to also include North Santa Fe.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other council questions? Okay. There is no action on this particular item. So thank you very much for the presentation, Ms. Baldwin. Thank you for coming all the way up here.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Okay. Very good. The next item, the next item on the agenda is D3, which is the Inland Rail Project Design Award. Pierce?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Larry Pierce, Director of Engineering. I have Tim Schell, Principal Engineer, here with me, which is the Principal Engineer on the project. What we're going to do tonight is we're going to have a discussion on the inland rail trail, and then at the conclusion of that discussion, talk about approval of a design award agreement for the consultant to do the work. A little background, inland rail trail, this is the multi-use bicycle and pedestrian trail that we've been talking about for years that links the coastal corridor from Escondido all the way through Los, all the way to Oceanside. Principally, that corridor is going to be the Sprinter alignment between Escondido and Oceanside, with the exception of the San Marcos Loop that was added to get access to the San Marcos College. Then we're going to have a trail link that will link the San Luis Rey Bicycle Trail near College Avenue in Oceanside and the Coastal Trail, so that will link it at, when we get to the coast. And this is an important thing that, as they just, you just talked about on the smart growth, this is one of the regional concepts that have been brought forth and been studied by Sandag also on interconnecting bicycle facilities. We're going to talk about the inland, or the inland rail trail in some segments here. And I've got a map of our section, but if you could kind of bear with me. The Escondido Transit Station, that is the Escondido, City of Escondido Transit Station, not our Escondido Avenue Transit Station. From the Escondido Transit Station to Pacific Street Railroad Crossing in San Marcos, that's the first trail segment, and it was completed with part of the Sprinter line. The second piece of the segment that's going in will be the, from Pacific Street Railroad Crossing to the Buena Creek Sprinter Station in San Marcos and in the county. San Marcos is designing that piece currently, and they're nearing completion of the design. Then the next piece, we'll pick it up at the Buena Creek Sprinter Station, and in conjunction with the county, we will run it from the Buena Creek Station all the way to North Melrose Station. Once we hit the North Melrose Station, then it turns into Oceanside, and then Oceanside in the future. They have no current plans, but will be doing the design in their section. This is the map of our section, as you can see, from the Buena Creek Station on the right side, all the way across through Vista up to the North Melrose Drive section. That's what we're going to be talking about in the design process. We've got a lot of design issues that we're going to have to overcome. One of the biggest design issues is the Sprinter construction. Made some drastic changes to the track alignment, especially in the area of the Escondido Avenue Transit Facility, when they had problems with the ADA access of getting people on and off the train. As a result, they realigned the track several, well, I guess probably almost two miles, both sides of the station to flatten that curve so they could get the trains closer to the station. As a result of that, they pushed the railroad track closer to the right-of-way and pushed the trail out of the right-of-way. So part of what we're going to have to do this time is to design the trail and find out where we have to acquire right-of-way now to secure the trail down through those areas that the alignment has changed. We've also got some stricter interpretation of ADA requirements that are coming out, so that's going to impact the trail design. The environmental documentation that was done by San Marcos over 10 years ago covers most of it, but it needs to be updated. And then the South Santa Fe Parquet, the Vista's demonstration section, will be completed. We'll complete the entire design for that, two final plans and specs as part of this award. And that will be the first constructed piece. Jurisdictional issues, NCTD right-of-way, we'll be working within their right-of-way, so we will have to be signing a license agreement. The California Public Utilities Commission must approve all of our trail crossings. As I said, from the Buena Creek Sprinter Station to the Vista city limits, we will be working with the county on the design concepts through that section. They will be building that section when they get their money. The Buena Creek Station is also a city of San Marcos, so there's three, three of us that will be collaborating in the design in that area. Additional issues, we've got Vista Community Development Department, we're updating our general plan, and the trail element to the general plan will be updated. We're also going to be working closely with the sanitation district and making sure that where we need to have sewer access, and where we don't have it now, that we will be using the trail to get to some of our sewer lines and sewer mains. And then, again, coordinating with Oceanside, when we connect the bicycle lanes, where we'll be connecting them to the Oceanside Boulevard, and that has to all be worked out with Ocean City of Oceanside. The design proposal process, we put out an RFP last year in August. We only received two proposals from consultants. And after several months of negotiations, we. two proposals from consultants, and after several months of negotiations, we pulled the plug and could not come to an agreement. We made some changes to the RFP and released it again in February, this time we got six proposals. We had a review panel of city staff, NCTD staff, and Sandag staff go through the proposals, and they have selected Somas as the most qualified consultant for this project. The project cost for the 4.9 miles, we're estimating a rough cost of $10 million. As you just heard, there's $1.1 billion in bicycle funds that are gonna possibly be available through the smart growth, and because this is a regional access way for bicycles, we think we've got a very good chance at it, and those are, as you just heard, those applications for projects are coming up. So, if we don't get all $10 million at the first pop, we're, whatever we can get, we will start working and building in segments then. So, the first phase is a preliminary design engineering for the entire, the entire length of the railway, or rail trail, from Buena Creek all the way to North Melrose, and that'll give us preliminary design information, we'll be able to work out the location, the grades, where we have to have slopes, retaining walls, and all of that, and get it to a preliminary design level. So, then, the next piece in Phase Two, we can start acquiring a right-of-way. Once we've got that done, then we will go to final plans and specs in Phase Three and Four. But tonight, we're talking about just Phase One, so that's the preliminary design engineering and the final design and engineering for the demonstration section, and we've negotiated that to a fee of $650,000. And with that, that concludes our report, and I'm ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, we have one individual that would like to speak to this, Sharon Reed.
Hello, my name is Sharon Reed, and 145 Mar Vista Drive, I'm Mayor of Anson City Council. My husband and I live on Mar Vista Drive where it crosses the railroad track. We have concerns about the noise made by the Sprinter starting at 4:15 a.m., continuing four crossings every hour, but that subject is for another meeting. We have been keeping track of a possible bike trail being built since 1992, when the city council authorized a search to be made for funding the project. Now, sixteen years later, it may become a reality. Riding paths such as the inland bike or rail trail are safer than riding on the street. Most recreational cyclists feel more comfortable using them. Families with young children on bikes can use a trail for a safe outing. The Inland Rail Trail would allow us access to the Buena Creek Sprinter Station from Mar Vista Drive. At present, there are no sidewalks or separation from the traffic on South Santa Fe. The station is our preference because the train stops both east and westbound. The trail is a great tie-in with the Sprinter transportation system. The community would benefit from the construction of the trail, it would help link North County cities and colleges and provide an alternative to car travel. Folks would have the opportunity to exercise in the fresh air, and to see the area, and perhaps stop at the various shops along the way. As an added bonus for the city, I think it would aid tourism. My husband and I choose cities and towns that have bike trails, specifically rails-to-trails because they use flatter terrain. Our inland rail trail could be listed in their books in the American Folksport, Folksport Association Guide to Walking and Biking Trails, as well as the bike map for the county. These could provide good advertisement for the city of Vista. We'd like to thank you for considering the trail, and also personally thank Tim Schell, who has been quite the PR man. He has kept us informed about the project and answered all our questions and concerns. We're excited that the Inland Rail Trail may become a reality and hope that we, that we will be able to use it. Generations of Vistans will definitely benefit from its construction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Council, Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, I'll just suggest that the lady and gentleman, if you had talked to me afterwards about noise, I represent the city on the NCTD Board, and we're always concerned about what the impact is on neighborhoods. And since we're on impact on neighborhoods, during the design phases and the redesign phases, and the redesigns of the redesigns by North County Transit District in getting the Sprinter through Escondido Avenue in particular, a lot of area was lost or just given up on because of engineering considerations. Are we gonna be faced with possibly the same situation as Oceanside has had, where we don't have a creek to deal with like they do, but in some, as you pointed out, Mr. Pierce, they're giving up on part of the rail trail and the rail alignment because of the flooding issues and that sort of thing. Is it going to be considered in the design as to maybe saying, this is just not worth the huge expense it might be for a certain section and having to move it outside the rail alignment?
We already know, like I said, that some of the places on either side of Escondido Avenue already have a compromised alignment. Those are areas that we're looking at, and we're gonna have to look at what's the cost impacts. You know, some of those tend to be maybe slopes and things like that, so if you're gonna put a, a 12-foot or 20-foot wide rail tra, or a trail out there and push that slope back, now you're talking of a 10 or 15, 20-foot retaining wall, and, you know, those are gonna have to be cost considerations as we work through that design and work through. The preferable alignment would be to keep it as close to the railroad right-of-way because the, we'll be able to be moving back and forth on it. The worst-case scenario would be to move away from the right-of-way entirely and then do something else through some other area.
Will you be taking the setbacks for the neighborhood's house, neighborhood's homes into consideration in your design in the sense that I think people deserve privacy and their space from their home to the public facilities?
Oh, very definitely, very definitely.
I think there's some places there that are relatively close.
Yes.
To consider, and that also comes back then to the noise issue. If you have a happy family moving through there and they're right in somebody's backyard, that could be a bit intrusive.
Yes.
The Sandag Transportation Committee, which I serve as an alternate on for inland cities, discusses probably once or twice a month various bike projects, and it's finally gotten to the point, it seems, within the committee, that it'd be nice to complete something. They seem to do a little bit here, a little bit there, and now it seems to be more, well, let's finish something so people actually have a contiguous area to go through and, and can enjoy that. And that really would be nice if Vista teamed up with everybody on your list of players to make that actually happen here in a consecutive, sensible fashion, rather than finishing some... No, I was gonna ask, what is the Vista, Santa Fe Parquet? I don't know what that means.
That's the Sir Optimus Parquet.
Sir Optimus Parquet, downtown, between Main and Vista Village.
Between Main and Vista Village, right next to Santa Fe, that little, little parquet there. We're gonna put a little section of the trail through there so everybody can see what it's gonna look like, and landscape that area, and do that very quickly, as quickly as we can put together.
Sort of the trail to nowhere, but it'll be a demonstration.
Well, it's just, it's a little piece that, that will, it'll show everybody what it's gonna be and give them a chance to see the trail, and, and then we'll be continuing to design the other, more difficult sections that you brought up.
Sure. Well, hopefully, we'll phase this in a way that we get the most bang for the buck and, get the, the most length in there for the riders' enjoyment, for the least amount of money, and then work on the more difficult things.
And try to keep it, try to keep it as contiguous as we can keep it with spots that they can ride the longest distance, connect to the transit facilities as easy as possible.
Well, there's a lot of interest at Sandag Transportation on this project, and I hope you'll be going down periodically to update them on how the collaborative is working to get this done.
Will do.
Because it seems to me in their planning cycle, if they knew about it well in advance, then it's given far better consideration when the funding is dispersed. Thank you.
Mr. Gronke?
Follow-up on Mr. Campbell, was talking about the restriction of that one area. I've, I believe what the speaker said, that, you know, I've used a lot of trails in different cities in different locations, is something I tend to do, you know, just hiking around. And I've noticed there's usually a tendency, whenever there's a restriction, to find a, another method of, to make that trail go through, whether it's a, a public utility or even residence, you know, going to, diving into residence and coming back on again. It always seems to work, so I think just wanna keep, keep that in mind as you go through this process. And so, and, and then the other piece that Mr. Campbell was referring to, when it comes to the cost of this right-of-way, this is, we cannot expect North County Transit to give us any consideration of that. Their budget's pretty tight right now.
I think they're pretty much tapped out.
Okay. But, when it comes to the entire length of it, except for some of these restrictions, much of the grading is already in place already?
That's correct, yeah. We did get some of the benefit when they did construct the rail line of grading part of the trail, and we still have to come back and do all the surfacing and, and the fence, some of the fencing and things like that, but there are sections that they just could not grade, and they took it as the right-of-way for their, their rail line.
Maybe probably hold back me and bankments and that type of retention walls that we'd have to consider.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Ritter?
That was one of the things I was gonna ask about, because when I served North County Transit prior to Mr. Campbell, that was one of the things that was important, was that they graded that rail trail as they went through and did the new Sprinter track, you know, so, I don't know whatever happened to all their, the promises on that, but, gosh, I just can't believe that more planning hasn't gone into trails and rail trails out here in the past, you know, that, so that we have them now to, to use, because I mean, other cities I go to have, where I go to my cottage, they have a rail trail that goes all the way from where my cottage is, it goes 60 miles up to the, up to the Mackinac Bridge, and you can go, my kids ride and we, you know, jog and everything on that rail trail, it goes for miles and miles and, and goes south, and so, it's amazing that it snows all winter there, and here we have, you know, 12 months of beautiful weather, and we don't have trails and sidewalks and things for people to get out with the price of gas to walk, and, you know, it's just amazing that Vista, we've gotten this far, all of our cities, I guess, this far without more trails and, and ways to get, get off the road and, and bike and walk, so, anyway, that would be, I say build it as soon as you can.
Okay, Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. About nine years ago, eight, nine years ago, well, actually, eight years ago when I ran the first time for office, one of the hot things here was the, the Sprinter, and I supported it pretty strong during that time, and I think that's one of the, one of the issues that, that really hurt my campaign, is that I did support it, and a lot of people didn't want it. And one of the thinking that I have is that I've been to many big cities, and they have transportation, that type of transportation all in these big cities, and can you imagine if the Bart wasn't there up in San Francisco, the, the problems that they would have with, with their traffic there? I believe that, that if you, if we build it, and, you know, there was a lot of talk about the crossings and it would hold up the traffic and this and that, and, you know, it hasn't done that, really hasn't done that here, and I, I feel so good that my business is right below it, right below it, and whenever I can hear, I can barely hear it coming through, and I, I make it a point to go out quite a bit and watch it go by, and when, when it went by, I'd see it, because it's a beautiful, beautiful train going through. But then I really got excited when they started hooking up the second one, which proved that it was a good thing that the people decided to put through. As far as the trails, what I, what I really enjoy and would like to see it go through completely is that, that I have grandkids, and I would rather get, hop on that thing, ride the bikes as far as we can, be safe, instead of them riding those bikes in your downtown area, which could create a problem. So, I thoroughly support it and I hope we can work things out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell?
Mayor, thank you. I wanted to come back to right-of-way access. North County Transit raised the fee for right-of-way access, I think from $100 to $600, or some other incredible number, and I'm, I was told that was done because of the requirements with FTA to have signal people and protection and all that type of thing, and, but I can see, as we go forward, to try and do some of these things, that we're gonna maybe have a constant dialogue with them about right-of-way fees. You mentioned in your presentation about getting a license, would that obviate that, take care of that problem, or what?
I don't believe the license, license is kind of like a lease to be able to use that area. I think the fees are gonna have, will be something that we'll be talking to them about, because that access is during construction and because the line is running, then they have to, we have to train people, and they have to be trained to be in the right-of-way, and in some cases, they have to have flagmen out there, so we'll have to work through that to see which way is the, the least costly to get the line constructed. We know that we're gonna be working in that railroad right-of-way.
We've also done some informal negotiations with them already for this design phase. As was mentioned before, some of the improvements for the rail trail were already installed, so they did some grading, they did some retaining walls, and they also put up in certain areas, they put a fence up, a chain-link fence between the tracks and where the trail is gonna be. So, fortunately, they have agreed to allow us to go out there and do any design-type work without flagman protection and without these extra charges for, you know, for inspectors and things like that, wherever we have a positive barrier already between the tracks and where the trail will be. The only thing that they're going to require flag protection and those extra fees and things on is when we do something out there that could potentially foul their tracks, they call it. So, if we had a geotechnical engineer out there with a boring rig sticking up that could tip over onto their tracks across the fence, they would then require us to have this flagger protection so that if something happens, they can stop the train in time. But, we did gain the advantage of the work that's already been done as saving us some money during the design phase. When we go to construction, we'll have similar issues, that anything that will, that could potentially foul their tracks, they're still gonna follow all their rules and require the cost of the flagger protection and everything else. So, the construction costs will be a little higher for us than they were for San, for the San Marcos and Escondido section, because we will have to work out there while the train is operational all day long. They didn't have to do that, so the costs were a little bit lower for the first phase, Escondido, San Marcos, than what we all incur.
Yes, certainly, while they were in construction, they could do both jointly, that made a huge difference.
They did them together, yeah.
And we knew that the moment the train started running, all the game changes.
Right.
But, and, and so that people understand, North County Transit has to follow the state utility rules, the FTA, the FRA, and there's probably four other acronyms in there I'm not even thinking about, but it's not their choice, it's their requirement to do that. But hopefully, we can work through some of these issues early enough on that we can mitigate the costs, because I can just see that as a huge, unanticipated expense to deal with.
Very good, I'm looking forward to the time that it's operational, it'll be fun. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, and is there a second?
I'll second.
Mayor? Motion is second, and I'm told our voting machine is operational.
Oh, sure. [laughing].
Now, there goes Tony Stone.
Who told you that, Mayor?
It works out in the audience.
I guess it works out in the audience, but here it's 5-0 in approval, so, thank you very much. Now, we'll go to the public hearing. The very first public hearing is one in which I can't participate in because I own property that's in close proximity to what we're talking about, so I will remove myself. The council changes.
Are there any speakers at all? Is there any speakers at all?
We'll do both of them.
Yeah. Okay. Good evening to the folks here in the city of Vista. Our first public hearing is PH1, vacation of a portion of Tierra del Cielo. Public hearing is open. Could I have a staff report?
Good evening, Mayor Protim, my name's Larry Pierce, I'm Director of Engineering, and I have Bill Jardine, our right-of-way agent, which will be making the presentation tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Protim, City Council. This is a public hearing to consider the vacation of a portion of Tierra del Cielo located north of the intersection of Camino, Loma Verde, and Grand View, as shown on the vicinity band. In 1969, a 40-foot-wide private road easement was, was recorded that created the street now known as Tierra del Cielo. If we have the others slide in. And that's, the road primarily showed in, in the gray asphalt area that goes, that goes from the top to the bottom of the map. In 1979, as part of the development requirements for parcel map 13925, an offer of dedication was recorded for the future widening and realignment of Tierra del Cielo. The offer included a portion of the 1969 private easement plus additional land. The offer included a portion of the 1969 private easement plus additional land, and that area is sort of shown in the cross-hatched area that looks like it's in orange on my screen. The current owners of the properties at 1530 and 1546 Tierra del Cielo have requested the vacation of that portion of the 1979 offer that lies within their properties. In order for the offer to be vacated, it first had to be accepted by the City Council. At its meeting on August 12, 2008, the City Council accepted the offer of dedication and set this date as the public hearing. The proposed vacation will not impact the access rights provided by the original 1969 easement. It will only eliminate the future widening and realignment for the area outside of the boundary of the 69 easement. So basically, the existing 40-foot-wide easement that was in 1969 will exist, and that will provide the access to all the property owners adjacent to it. A notice for this public hearing was advertised in accordance with the requirements of the California Streets and Highway Code, and to enhance the availability of public utility services in the area, we're going to reserve a 20-foot-wide utility easement within the area of the original 1969 easement, so that way we can run utilities in the future if we need to. And that ends my presentation.
Thank you very much. Is there any public speakers that would like to speak on this item?
No, 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 no public speakers.
Okay. I do have light on. Mr. Gronky?
Two questions. First of all, one statement, is that?
You've saved me all night, haven't you?
Thank you so much.
I'm all doing it.
I appreciate the city doing this. This is something that I really believe in, the maintenance of some of rural roads. But in doing so, I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and I understand that if we have a 40-foot-wide private road that now exists there, that would be sufficient for our fire department to get through in emergency situations?
Yes, it would be.
Okay, so that there wouldn't be any burden on them if we do this? Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Is it likely there'll be other properties in the future that'll ask for similar treatment, and are we just piecemealing this, or why, I guess my question, why only two parcels here as opposed to the entire alignment of Cielo?
Actually, as Tierra del Cielo goes north, which would be towards the top of the map, it actually turns into an area that's in the county, and returns back to the original 40-foot-wide road easement. The only area that was really increased in size was from the top of the map going down, and there's one parcel below 1530 Tierra del Cielo that hasn't been developed yet, but that owner has not made any request to have the portion vacated.
So we might be revisiting this again for that purpose?
I mean, it's possible, but highly unlikely, because the portion of Tierra del Cielo, as it runs down, is all a private street, so that the, I would imagine that we probably will not have any future vacation in this area.
Okay, and is there any downside to this vacation that we need to know about?
Uh, no, sir.
Not at all? Would you like a motion?
Sure.
I'd move for approval.
Close the public hearing.
And close the public hearing.
Close the public, yeah, okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Gronky, second sit. Let's try the buttons, okay? Out of range. Let's have a hand, please.
It's approved. It's a four, four zero.
Okay. Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break, please. The next item on the agenda is public hearing number two, which is a sewer reimbursement agreement between the City of Vista and Richard P. Kovell, trustee of the Kovell Revocable Living Trust. Mr. Pierce?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Larry Pierce, Director of Engineering. In 2007, the Kovell Revocable Living Trust extended the sewer line, flip to the next page, from Taylor Street down Voluntary Road, about 577 feet. Developer requested that others benefiting in the property share the cost of the sewer improvements at that time. Now, he is, the developer has come forth now after building the sewer line and is now asking for a reimbursement agreement. According to the municipal code, the city engineers to determine the cost of the improvements, the benefiting area, and the cost of allocation, and then there'll be a, the city council would conduct a public hearing to establish the reimbursement charge in the benefit area. Also requires that the city enter into an agreement with the developer, and what that does is the benefiting properties will pay the city. The funds that are collected, less a 5% fee for administration by the city, are reimbursed to the developer. The total cost of the improvements has been determined to be $113,034, and we've done the analysis to determine the boundary of the benefited area and the allocation of the cost. And here's the cost of the improvements. As you can see, the engineering cost, a little over $9,000. The construction cost, a little over $98,000, almost $99,000. Permits and inspection fees at $5,000, to get to the $113,034.25. There's nine benefiting units, and so the cost per benefiting unit is a little over $12,000. The Kovells own two of the properties, so that removes them from the reimbursement. So now we're down to seven reimbursable units. So the total reimbursable cost would be $87,915 and some change, less our 5% at city administration fee, so the total reimbursement cost to the developer would be a little over $83,000. The reimbursement benefit per the municipal code is to reimburse for the principal, also the interest, which is equal to a 20-year U.S. Treasury note on the date of the adoption of the resolution approving the agreement. And then that interest rate is fixed and applied to the entire life of the agreement and is compounded annually or for any portion of the, any year. There's a number of, as we just went through the costs, there's seven benefiting properties, and they had the opportunity to participate at the time of the construction, it'll reduce cost, and elected not to do so at that time. So we have reviewed the documentation and find the costs are fair and reasonable, and that each property will pay $12,559.36 if they desire to connect to the sewer within the next 20 years, and that we'll take our 5% administration fee. Now, this is just a connection fee. This doesn't include the cost of the property owner to actually connect the sewer lateral from their property to the main, so there would be an additional cost, and a type, or a class, Class A contractor would have to do that work also. So the requested actions is to establish the reimbursement charge in the area of benefit, approve the reimbursement agreement with the Kovell Revocable Living Trust, and authorize the city clerk to file a resolution, agreement, and the notices of encumbrance. Now, this is a little bit different than the last two reimbursement agreements that we've been brought before you, that this is a reimbursement agreement that if they, it's a reimbursement agreement that sits there, it's not a lien on the property, and if they choose to execute and connect to the sewer in the next 20 years, then this money becomes due and payable. But if they decide not to do anything, then there's no lien on that property.
Just a question on the, on the amount of money, the $12,000, is that the same no matter if they connect next week or in 20 years?
That's correct.
And is it plus interest?
Plus interest, yes, I'm sorry.
Plus interest, and what's the interest rate?
Uh, I didn't, whatever it is when we adopt it, I don't know what the current interest rate is right now, Mayor.
Okay, very good. We have four individuals that want to speak. Did you want to ask a question first, Mr. Lopez? Okay, first is Robert Dugan, and he'll be followed by Daniel Prinzing, and he'll be followed by Josh Hall, and he'll be followed by Fred Lopez.
Good evening, council members. My name is Robert Dugan, I live at 1826 Voluntary, and-
Mr. Dugan, just excuse me.
Sir.
Could you put up the map on the screen so we can tell exactly where-
I was about to, I was hoping you'd be able to do that. But just for reference, let me orient this.
Okay, there we go, okay.
This is my parcel right here, it's Dash Ot, Ot 5, and I have a driveway to Voluntary, and the main part of the lot fronts on Taylor Street. Now, because of the slope of the hill, I would like to present the idea to you that I should not be considered as one of the benefiting parcels at all. I should not be in this contract, because I have a multi-story house. My lowest level, in fact, all my levels have bathrooms on. The lowest-level bathroom is lower by about, at least four or five feet or more, is lower than the tap-in point from my driveway to the Voluntary sewer. You can also see how easy it would be for me to, if I wanted to tap into the sewer, I could just go down to Taylor Street and make a short run over and tap into the Taylor Street sewer. And I talked to Mr. Mendoza about this, and he agreed completely that the only viable option for me would be to go down to Taylor Street and tap in if I ever decided to do so. He said the only way it could be handled to the Voluntary sewer would be as if I had a personal pumping station. Well, I'll tell you, my, my mother and father had a pumping station out in front of their house, and those things occasionally go bad, and when they do, bad barely describes it, because the sewage backs up into your house, and you can just imagine what it's like. So, a pumping station is not a good idea, and therefore, I would like to recommend to you that because of the mechanical difficulties of tying in to the Voluntary sewer, that my parcel be deleted from the list, and I realize I would be making an amendment to the agreement, and I'd like to ask you, what's the procedure that we need to follow in order to do that?
Okay, now I understand that all four of you want to speak in a certain order, so that you're making a presentation together, is that it?
No, we're just not, not stepping on each other's toes as we-
Oh, okay. And again, your parcel is the one that says O5 at the top?
Yes, sir.
That's on the corner there, okay, that one.
I would also-
Okay, just before you go on, Mr. Pierce, in times past, we never allowed pumping if there was another alternative.
That's correct.
It's not allowed, so why are we going to do?
The developer requested that this parcel be included to lower the price to the other parcels.
I strenuously object to that as a reason.
Mr., we're discussing this right now.
Yes, sir.
If we need to get some further information, we'll ask for it.
Okay.
Thank you. So then, on that, he, he has access then to Taylor Street to, for his sewer?
With, yes, he would have to extend the main that you see on Taylor Street.
At the corner there of Voluntary, just have to extend it west.
He would have to extend the main up the center of the street, and then build a lateral into his property.
And that would be more expensive or less expensive than putting it, connecting to the Voluntary?
Probably about the same. It could be more expensive, I don't know, I, the main is probably going to be more expensive and the connection fees than this deal here.
But he'd have a longer lateral, wouldn't he?
Yeah, and he would have a longer lateral.
Okay, all right. Mrs. Ritter?
I have a question. Did the, did the, so the Voluntary, did the, they have to extend the lateral that's down on the street to get to Voluntary? Is that part of the, is that part of the expense?
No, each one of the parcels would have to build their own lateral to the main.
No, that's what she was asking.
Oh, okay.
On Taylor.
Was the sewer already in Taylor?
Is the sewer already there on Taylor? Was that part of the whole project?
The dashed line that you see in Taylor is an existing sewer.
Existing line, okay.
So they tapped into that existing line right there?
Right.
Okay.
And that's what the parcel right on the corner has done. As you can see, it says parcel presently connected to public sewer.
Yeah.
Then I had a question for Mr., is it Dugan?
Dugan, yes, ma'am.
I had a question for you, because I read somewhere in here that the porch covers, a porch covers up your septic tank?
It looks that way, yes, ma'am.
So how do you pump your septic tank? And if you have problems, how do you solve that?
Right, right next to the outside wall of my house is a four-inch duct that comes up, and it's, it's used as the pumping viaduct, you might say, but it's right next to my house, and it goes down through the concrete, which up makes up my lower porch. I don't know why it's there, but it was there when I bought the property.
So, so if you had to replace your septic, is there room on your property to do that and to have a leach field and all that? Is there, is there room if you had to replace your septic? Or would you have to dig it?
For septic?
Mm-hmm.
I have a septic right now that's working fine. I, I have a septic right now that's working fine.
And how long have you had the house? I mean, how long has the house been, had, had a septic tank?
Well, the house was built, I think, in the early seventies, and I bought it in oh-two.
Okay, so the septic tank's been in there since oh-seventy?
Yeah.
And it's working fine?
And, and the, the family that had the house before, my wife and myself, had mother, father, and three daughters. So I feel that they used it to its maximum extent. And it's, you know, it, it was tidied up just before the sale.
Okay, Mr. Lopez, did you have a question?
Again, you're saying your home is? Your home is lower than the actual street or the line is coming through?
I have a multi-story building. And part of it is higher than the sewer line, part of it is lower.
Okay, so the, Mr. Pierce, the main one out there, where it shows where it ends, from there, how far would you have to take it in order to satisfy the city to be, for him to be able to connect in the future?
He would have to run the main-
How many feet is that?
Probably, well, the line is almost six hundred feet long, the dark, dark line. So he's going to have to extend probably over a hundred feet up the street to his property on a sewer main. Um, and may be required to build a manhole at that point. And then out of the manhole, connect with a sewer lateral.
Are we talking about my property?
No, I'm talking about the, the street out in, on the, out in the main street.
Oh, Taylor Street?
Yeah, Taylor Street.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought you were talking about Voluntary, and I'm trying to replace the-
Now, most of these properties have homes on them?
Uh, some of them do, yes.
What size are, are these lots, most of them?
The, the lots are mostly one acre. There's two lots are half acre, one lot is two acres.
So that means they can be divided, correct?
Uh, I think, yeah, the zoning, Carlos. I'm sorry, this is Carlos Mendoza, he's our sanitation engineer.
Carlos Mendoza, Sewer Department. And when we looked at these, these properties, they're all about a half acre. There's no reason to believe that any of the septic would fail in the lifetime of the agreement.
In the twenty years.
Right, all of the septic systems, as far as I know, are working properly.
You, you have to turn your microphone on, please.
The soil, the soils on Taylor there, they are a red clay soil, is that correct? Right there, that, right there where that, where these homes are?
I'm not entirely sure of the soil types up there.
I am.
All right, let's not get too technical here, let's-
What, the, the folks that are here, the life of, of their present sewer could go for another twenty years?
That's possible. And if that's the case, then there would be no payment due.
Okay, so has there been anyone, any complaints to the Health Department about any of their sewers leaking in that area?
I've not heard of any.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next gentleman to speak-
Excuse me, I, give me, may I have one more, one additional minute to talk about?
Uh, council, do you want to let, I mean, we've-
Well, because I don't want to talk about myself, I want to talk about the Cameraman. Do you have the Cameraman letter in your packet?
We do.
I, I would just like to draw your attention to it because Mr. Cameraman and Mrs. Cameraman both have property that goes down and fronts on Taylor. And Mr. Cameraman says in that letter that if he wants to hook up to a sewer, he wouldn't go to the trouble of going into Voluntary anyway. He would go down to Taylor. I just wanted to point out that he and I are-
We have the letter, thank you. And if Mr. Cameron would like to speak to it, then he should be here.
Well, he's, he's out of the country, he's out of the country at the moment.
Yeah, well, we do have his letter.
I, I thank you very kindly for that.
Please, uh, no, you give it to the city clerk.
Ladies and gentlemen, I delivered personally to the city council clerk five copies of homeowners' objections on five pages with six pages of exhibits dated August twenty-fourth, along with three other letters objecting to the reimbursement agreement with the Cobals. I'd like to comment first on our engineer's report this evening. Uh, one is that, that interest rate that we find in our city documents is seven percent. And in twenty years, that amount would amount to over fifty thousand dollars. And that relates to the question about whether it's twelve thousand or what. And each year that goes by, that twelve thousand grows by seven percent compounded. So that's why we get to fifty thousand dollars. An estimate on the laterals for us is from seven to eight thousand dollars. The lot sizes was brought up this evening. And seven of the lots on Voluntary are one acre, one that is not connected. And the one lot is larger than an acre, I think it's a acre and a half or two acres, Mr. Cameraman's. And Mr. Dugan's is a half acre. To continue, two main objections exist. First, no economic benefit exists in attaching to the sewer by any one of the seven homeowners involved in the proposal for reimbursement. The, secondly, a serious city communication error occurred in two thousand and four when planning stated there would be no reimbursement district for the proposed lot split. This amounts to gross negligence, in my opinion. A nonconformance to the tentative parcel map occurred when the sewer was needlessly extended, which obviously raised sewer costs. It was extended by an eighty-five feet. The policy of using a reimbursement district for a single and simple lot split for one owner on a small street is outrageous. Particularly when no other owner is interested in attaching to a sewer. And this was made clear to Mr. Cobal when he approached the other owners with an offer of a discounted price if they would sign up and pay for the sewer installation. His letter is enclosed in that package. There are no benefiting homeowners, except the Cobals. Unanswered questions still exist. We have learned that the lien or encumbrance will be away and done with after twenty years. But by whom and how will it be done? In other words, does the homeowner have to go down to the city and go through some machinery or through some procedure that we're unaware of? Who will correct the agenda report that states that it's necessary to extend the sewer five hundred and seventy-seven feet to service the two-lot parcels? This is incorrect, by eighty-five feet too much. Where is exhibit one, which was not attached to the agenda report that we received? Who will correct the Cobal agreement which references only six parcels on page one and two, which is under additional fees? But seven parcels are identified on A, B, and C. Seven parcels is correct.
Okay, would you please summarize?
Sir?
Would you please summarize your comments? Each speaker's allowed three minutes.
I have one more paragraph if I may read it.
You're fine.
I would probably be in the three-minute group except for the comments given by our chief engineer. Who will review the conditions of approval, section three and perhaps others, that are in noncompliance with zoning and administrative resolution two thousand and four dash twenty and determine if there should be a revocation of approval? After no notice of activity regarding the sewer for nearly four years, receiving the notice of public hearing, the agenda report, and the agreement with the Cobals from the city has posed serious concerns for the seven owners on Voluntary Road. Without exception, they are all extremely upset, particularly after the minimum review and investigation disclosed so many errors that indicate lack of proper attention by the city and the Cobals. It is likely that further reviews will disclose more problems and noncompliance and will increase costs to the city and to the Cobals. Thank you.
Before you go, which is your property?
Uh, my property is eight N one seven one, one seven two oh-nine. It's an acre and a thirteenth.
If your septic tank fails, where would you be able to obtain sewer?
I, if my septic tank failed, I have about a half acre of septic field, of soil, good soil. And we have a new septic tank. We properly went through the city and enlarged our house. We have a new septic tank, a large one, with two manhole covers. And it goes to an existing drain field. The cost of a septic drain field repair is minimal, like four or five thousand dollars at the very maximum. To go to your sewer down there on Voluntary, we have to go through a wall of granite. And that would be very expensive, as well as the twelve thousand and the seven thousand. And to repair our, our, the septic system if there should ever be a failure, and it's, as I say, it's three years old, it'd just be ridiculous.
I guess the question in my mind is, is then, if you're never going to use this sewer, then, um, what's the objection?
If I'm not going to ever use this sewer, I'm not a benefiting owner to the sewer.
You'll never pay anything.
What's that?
You, if you're never going to use the sewer, you're never going to pay for anything.
That is correct.
So what's the objection?
Ah, having a lien or an encumbrance-
No lien on your property.
What's that?
There's no lien.
Uh, sir, a lien and, according to the engineering department, who got to the city attorney, according to them, a lien and encumbrance could be used either way. And they, and in the documents presented to us, they use lien and they use encumbrance. I, I really don't care. Either one of them is attached to your title. And if you should sell your property, a potential buyer is going to look at that and want some kind of an adjustment because of that or go into all kinds of questions or walk away, simply because he sees this on the document.
We've got our city attorney here now, let's, let's let him give an opinion.
Certainly.
Um, if I understand correctly, what's filed is a notice, which is different than a lien. It's not an encumbrance. Uh, it would become an encumbrance in the event that there were a connection. But at the present time, it's just a notice.
There would not be a title on our title?
Uh, I, I think there's a notice that is recorded in order to allow people to know if they ever do connect to the sewer, there's a charge. But it's not an encumbrance, it's not a lien, it's not a debt.
Okay, well, we've been misinformed, and I'm sorry to have taken that posture.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Josh Hall. Mr. Hall is here coming up. If you'd let us know which one of you is your property?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, City Council. My name is Josh Hall. I reside at eighteen oh-three Voluntary Road. Uh, my plot number is one seven one dash one seven two dash eleven. Top, well, bottom right-hand corner, I guess, of your, of your map. Uh, just to come a little bit of a clarification here. My septic tank has been functioning fine for thirty years. The drive, my driveway from the sewer, um, at the top of the hill there up to where my septic tank is, is two hundred and eighty feet of a concrete driveway. If my tank were to fail, then, I, what I actually need is clarification. My understanding is that if you're more than two hundred feet away from the connection point, that you are not required, if your tank fails, you're not required to hook up to the existing city sewer. Since my driveway is two hundred and eighty feet long, I obviously go much further than the, than the two hundred feet. But for me to do that would be requiring to jackhammer up a driveway two hundred and eighty feet long and ten feet wide. I have a proposal here from a contractor that I had done in two thousand and two. And at that time, it was twenty-five thousand dollars, and that was in oh-two. I'm suspecting at this point in time, that's probably closer to thirty-five or forty thousand dollars. And I also had a, um, system pavers out about two weeks ago with a verbal contract at eighty thousand dollars to jackhammer that driveway and put up a new driveway. Well, I can tell you that I have no interest in whatsoever in joining with the sewer because of the incredible cost that it would incur to me beyond just the, the fees that have already been put forth already. And I would like a little bit of clarification on this, if I may. Am I right in understanding that if I, my tank is more than two hundred feet away from this existing sewer, that if the tank failed, I would get a permit and I could go ahead and replace that tank?
Mr. Pierce?
Excuse me, could you please restate the question?
Sure. Um, since my sewer tank is two hundred and, it's probably a little bit more than that, that's just the length of the driveway, plus to get out to the area at the top of Voluntary, probably add another thirty feet. We're looking at over three hundred feet from my tank to the sewer out there. And my question is, if, if I'm not required to do this because I'm beyond the two hundred feet, then obviously if I had a failure in my tank, I would just pull the permit, have the tank replaced at four, five thousand dollars or six thousand dollars or whatever it would be, and not incur the other fifty to seventy or eighty thousand dollars that's, that would be required. So my question is, if I'm beyond two hundred feet, do I have to hook up if my tank fails?
There are a couple of questions at issue there. One of them is the determination as to whether a property must connect to sewer. There is no current ordinance requiring properties to connect to sewer. Only in the case of a discretionary permit would a discretionary authority be used to require a property to extend a sewer such as this one, the Cobal's property, and extend the public sewer to connect those two properties as a condition of the discretionary permit. However, in this case, in anyone building here, just a, a single-family development in accordance with their existing permits would be a ministerial permit. In the case of a ministerial permit, there is no requirement to connect to sewer at all in the city. Now, in the case of a failed septic, the Health Department makes a determination as to whether the septic tank can remain or be repaired. In the case that it cannot, and in the case that sewer is within two hundred feet of the parcel, then there is a policy that I'm aware of that they would enforce that requires a property to connect. There are also provisions for economic hardship and that sort of thing. But again, that would be a call that would be made by the county Health Department. And if the case is that the septic is, if the county decides that the parcel must connect to sewer, then this line extension does make it convenient for them to connect and to avoid the alternative, which would be possibly condemnation. So there is a benefit in that way, just being available. And as far, there is one other test that is enforced by the sanitation districts. And that is, that if the city engineer determines that a connection is more than two hundred feet away and can benefit upstream parcels, then a main would be required to be extended. In this case, there would be no upstream benefit, so a main would not be required and a long lateral would be allowed.
I think he was, still wants to know what the answer to his question was. The question being is that if he's more than two hundred feet away, it appears that you're saying is, is that per the code and the county regulations and the Health Department regulations, is that it would have to be determined by the county whether or not you could replace that septic tank? Or whether it's an economic hardship to do so? Or whether they're going to determine whether or not you hook up to the existing line?
So that means that if my tank does fail, that-
We check with the county.
The county Health Department makes that determination.
Okay, so that means that either I come up with the seventy or eighty thousand dollars to hook up to the sewer, or they condemn my house?
The county, and, and you could make a determination for hardship- The county, and you could make a determination for hardship case based on the cost to hook up. So there's three options, alternatives. But again, that's not the city council, it is the county health department.
Okay. Okay, next is Mr. Fred Lopez.
My property is APN one seven one one seven two oh seven. It's right above Bob.
Okay.
And now that we've heard the economic and the cost of all constructions that needs to be done within the neighborhood. A little bit of my background is, I work for Spayworth's Assistant Center in San Diego, and I take Sprinter, the coaster, the bus, and all that one way. It takes two and a half hours. Let's cut down on financial. Financial-wise, we bought the house two years ago when it's really high, and now it's two-thirds, and I owe the bank. If I sell the house, I owe the city.
You owe what? You don't owe the city anything.
Well, it's going to be a disclosure on the house when I sell the house. They'll take that as a...
No.
Either way, it's a financial burden. And plus, if you do put some sort of lien...
No, there's no lien.
Or any kind of statement. Spayworth or the government takes, really checks on the backgrounds as financial. You understand what I'm saying? It's, the people I work for, they watch the financial status of every personnel. If you have a bankruptcy, a lien, or a bad credit and stuff, they put that against you as, they look at it as something that you're not able to manage. So I'm just trying to say, please be careful how you write that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On this property, excuse me, one more question. On your property, is your property, the one right above it, is the one that's going to require a pump? Would this require a pump as well, Mr. Pierce?
I don't believe that any of the properties would necessarily require a pump. The one property that was discussed, the parcel lending in oh five, Mr. Cobal was presented with options, basically. He could have chosen who to make party to this agreement. And he was made aware that if the oh five property chose to extend the sewer into Taylor Street and make that connection there, that they would not be required to pay this reimbursement because they would be paying for the extension of the line in Taylor Street. He chose to accept that risk. Part of the reason he chose that is because it would be more convenient for that property to connect to the sewer in Voluntary, and because the first floor could gravity flow. If there were any services required on the second floor, the lower floors, that could not gravity flow, then an internal pump would be put in, which is a little bit different than a package pump station for a single-family dwelling. So, because they would still have services available on the first floor. So I believe that's what we spoke about the other day with the homeowner there, and I think it was misunderstood just a little bit.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pierce, do you have any other comments?
One thing I'd like to make comment about is that this, the reason that we're involved in this is because there's other properties involved in this. The developer knew full well going into this that the decision lands with you whether this agreement is approved or not. Our municipal code also references that if they wait until the end after the work is done, there is a chance that the agreement may not be approved by the city council.
You know, one of the things that bothered me was a statement that was made by staff is that the developer chose who would be included within this district. I was under the impression that that's something that we did, and it was based on, it wasn't based on the developer, but it was based on their benefit to this particular...
And we agreed with the benefit. And it was like Mr. Mendoza just spoke about, the oh five parcel could be served in a variety of different ways. And trying to make it a plausible solution for everyone to include that one would lower the price for the entire group.
Well, the oh five, if his, the oh five property owner, if his sewer fails, or his septic tank fails, then he has his choice. He can extend the main on Taylor...
That's correct.
And hook up through that way, or he can go to Voluntary. And if he chooses to go through the Taylor, extending the Taylor, then he's not required to pay a dime for the Voluntary.
That's correct.
Okay, so then, if he says that's the way he's going to go, then it really shouldn't be a problem then.
That's correct.
Okay.
Sir, it should not be in the agreement.
Well, it has no, I'm sorry, we're discussing this now. We had, you had your chance. Now, do you have another comment you want to make? If you do, go to the stand, please. I didn't ask you to make a stand, I said, "Go to the stand." I didn't ask you to make a stand, I asked you to go to the stand. Now, what I'm saying is, is you have a comment, we need it on the tape, and so that, the fact, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding, maybe you can help me. I'm having a hard time understanding that this, including you in this, doesn't really place a burden on you because you have another alternative. You can go to the, number one, you say you have a septic tank that's going to last forever. Number two, you can go to Taylor Street and extend the main, and then a lateral from that main to your house. And then your third alternative, if those two don't work, well then, would be to go to Voluntary. And you're saying chances are, the Voluntary choice is never going to happen.
No, what I'm saying is exactly what you were saying a few minutes ago. How come the developer gets to choose which parcels are included in the reimbursement agreement?
And the staff said, technically, my parcel should not even be in that. That's my point. What the staff is saying to me is the fact, as an answer to that question, is that there's a benefit to your parcel. Now, if you don't see that benefit and you don't use that benefit, that's your choice. But there is, that can be logically included within that district because that, there is an opportunity for you to use that sewer. Now, you're saying you probably won't ever use it, and you may never use it. And so then, it's not going to cost you a dime, one way or the other.
I'm not going to outlive it.
Well, that may be, the case may not, but what I'm saying is, is that you're telling us that it does make a difference.
No, what I'm saying is, I don't understand why he gets to pick and choose which parcels will be in the agreement.
I guess what, that's a, that's really not a misnomer, because what he's saying is, he gets to recommend, then the staff determines whether there's a benefit or not. And the staff determine that there is a benefit, and I can see that there is a benefit, a potential benefit to your property.
Well, when I have to run from my house out to the street line, it's going to be about two hundred and fifty feet straight down the middle of my driveway. That's not an option for me.
To get to what, to get to the Voluntary one, or to get to the...
To get to Voluntary. From my house to the edge of the street, not even to the sewer line, but just to the edge of the street is two hundred and fifty feet.
How far is it to get to Taylor Street?
It's about, let's see, it's about a hundred and twenty feet from the house to the edge of Taylor.
And then you'd have to extend the Taylor sewer line.
Yeah. I would have to either have the main line run further up towards my property, and I don't know what the options are technically, if I wanted to run along the easement and go down to the existing sewer. But like you said, I have no...
You don't have an option to do that. The option is, is that, and this is any property, would have to extend the main line.
Okay.
You can't extend laterals all over the place.
I would still rather do that irregardless of the cost than to have these pumps in my house that can fail, or any kind of tap into Voluntary.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, I think we've discussed this sufficiently, at least in my mind. I think I have an understanding now. Council, has any of you have any comments, or, Mr., or Mrs. Ritter?
I'm having the same trouble you're having, is understanding, if there's no lien on their house, and no, you know, if they don't ever use it, it doesn't matter, it's just an option. It's, even if they sold their house, I would think a person buying their house would think, "Well, just in case the septic ever failed, I have an option out there." There's an option out there, which they wouldn't have if they didn't do it. So I have a hard time understanding, you know, what the disagreement is with you guys. I'm having a hard time understanding that, so that would be all I have.
Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm glad we're having this discussion because it may allay some of the fears of the neighbors. But let me ask this, if the council did not approve this reimbursement agreement, then the Cobal's, this is a bad assumption, but I'll say it anyway, own the sewer, it's the Cobal sewer?
No, it's a public sewer.
It's a public sewer?
Yes.
Okay, so should somebody within the gray areas then, at some point in the future, choose to go in there and connect to that sewer, what would the process be?
They would have to, as Mr. Mendoza said, there would have to be a reason, whether they had a failed sewer system, or they had a, they wanted to increase their home with a remodel or an expansion. For some reason, they would have to connect to the sewer. Then they would have to connect the lateral to the sewer line and run the sewer lateral from the sewer line to their residence.
And I understand that, but what's the process that they would be allowed to do that? What would they pay?
They would have to pay a Class A contractor to come in, dig the street up.
They wouldn't have to pay for that portion of the line, they wouldn't have to pay their fair share of the line that went down there that brought the sewer and made it available for them.
Right.
Yeah, all they have to do is pay the lateral.
No, so they would avoid that cost?
Yeah, they would avoid the cost of the main to get it up to them.
Okay. In essence, if I'm reading your staff report correctly, we, the council, are required to approve a reimbursement agreement. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we don't really have that choice?
No, you're not required, your approval is required to put the reimbursement agreement into effect.
Into effect, but the ordinance doesn't require that.
Doesn't require you. That's what I was talking about earlier, is that after the fact, construction like this, the developer is taking a large gamble that you're going to make a decision to approve this reimbursement agreement. And the way the municipal code is written in one place is that there's an admission to, if you're going to look at doing a reimbursement agreement, is to do it before you do the work.
Absolutely. So back to Mr. Stone, if I may, again, Mr. Stone, what, reiterate, please, what will go on their deed? What sort of a document? Because I think that was the biggest fear I heard.
It's a form of notice that would give future owners information that in the event they were to connect to the sewer in the next twenty years, there would be a fee, a reimbursement fee. But if there were no connection to the sewer within the next twenty years, and we're talking about this sewer down Voluntary, then there'd be no future reimbursement obligations, so they could connect in twenty-five years, and there would be no obligation to reimburse at that time. So it's a form of notice.
Okay, a form of notice. So in essence, what I'm hearing is nobody really wants to connect to this thing in the foreseeable future, so if the reimbursement agreement goes through, the city is the, pardon the term, stuckey for the cost less the Cobal share. So some...
No.
No.
They paid the whole thing.
They paid the whole thing.
Up front. They paid the whole thing.
But we're not required to reimburse them?
No.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Gronky?
I want to follow up on Mr. Campbell's line of reasoning there.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter, for saving me again. Why was this lateral, why was this sewer line built?
Carlos Mendoza from the Sewer Department, again. The sewer line was built in order to satisfy the condition for a lot split by the Cobal's. They had one parcel, that's the lighter shade parcel there, that's split into these two parcels, number sixteen and seventeen.
So the benefit of this particular sewer line was for that lot split, not for the residents around there?
It's for the, it's to satisfy that condition, correct?
Thank you. So it's, and if, if we follow the reasoning of these people, in the future, attaching to that, to that sewer line, which is then going to become the city sewer line?
Yes.
It would, there would be no additional cost to them, there would be no reimbursement cost to them?
There would be no cost for the sewer main, there would be capacity charges...
Which they would pay...
Which they have to pay anywhere, yeah.
Exactly, okay.
Mr. Lopez?
Thank you. The, I think the Cobal's would pay to bring the whole line through, correct?
They have already paid it.
Okay, they've already paid, now, that's right, okay. But who benefits are the two lots? Now, will the, after, let's say on the nineteenth year, and you decide to put the sewer through, I mean, to connect to the sewer...
Another year.
But at nineteen years, do you still have to, what would it be cost to an individual, one of those individuals there?
Well, it would cost...
Now, I want to hear, I want to hear from my, okay, what would be the cost in nineteen years from now, if someone, one of those decide to hook up to that?
The estimate would be approximately, it would be your compounded interest per annum based on whatever the rate is. It would be close to fifty thousand dollars by, at that point in time. And then you would have to, you know, if you had a comp, depending on what the interest rate, if it was, you know, two or three percent, you know, it might be down to thirty-eight to forty thousand dollars. It depends on the interest rate annually. Then you would also have to pay for your, the additional personal hookup, yes.
If you remember, we removed that seven percent.
Right, it's not seven percent.
It's not seven percent.
That's why I said, it's whatever the rate.
It's, and Carlos just told me that it's about three percent is what the...
It is now today, so it just depends on what it would be for over the next nineteen years. You don't know that.
But it's set, when it, it would be, if it was three percent today, that interest rate is now set for the twenty-year period.
Oh, I'm sorry, apologies, just, that's our ordinance.
So I believe what they were saying too, is that if the wording on that, it's an actual lien against that property, it's like a lien, it's not a lien, but the wording says that in case they decide, then they have to go back and pay that interest in that whole thing for that nineteen years, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So that's a lot of money. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Ritter?
Okay, but think, all right, this is, think what your house is going to be worth in twenty, think what a house was worth twenty years ago, think what a house is going to be worth in twenty years, when you're talking about today's dollars, you know, if it's fifty thousand dollars, and your sewer has failed, that would be the only, otherwise, at nineteen years, you'd wait another year and you wouldn't have to pay anything. So you have to think what a house is worth in fifteen or nineteen years, you know, the increase, I mean, think about what the houses were worth twenty years ago here, all of you, and know that houses may be going down now, but it's cyclical, and they'll be going up again.
And you have to also consider that the person who built the sewer has carried the expense for that twenty years, for the entire, for the entire sewer line. All right, I think we've discussed this sufficiently to get an understanding of what we're trying to do here. Is there a motion to be made?
I'll make it. Okay, I would make a motion to close a public hearing and adopt the city resolution.
Is there a second to that motion?
Well, I'll second it so we can move forward.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Ritter and a second by Mr. Campbell. Is there any further discussion? You know, the one thing that I look at this is, is that the interest rate that's being set is a fairly low interest rate, three percent for that twenty years. set is a fairly low interest rate, 3% for that 20 years. And the sewer itself, I mean, sir, if you're gonna talk, please go out into the foyer. The, if their sewer, their septic tanks fail, well, then they're gonna need sewer. If it doesn't fail, then they'll never have to pay. I, and they all claim that their septic tanks are perfect, so that I think it's insurance in terms of the property that they do have a sewer there. I don't think it's fair to those that built the sewer to have the others come and then say, "Well, I'll, I may have to hook up in year 19, but I don't wanna have to, you know, have paid you for carrying that for that entire time, the funding for that entire sewer line." So I don't know. I think it's time to take a vote.
Mayor, just before we do, I'd ask the attorney to look at the top of page 2 of There's a, "In the event owners of the parcel subject to a majority of the change objected to the change, this council may only approve the change by affirmative vote of at least four of its members." Would you reiterate for us the impact then of, if it was, say, a 3-2 vote, what happens?
There'd need to be a supermajority vote of four.
So four out of five of the council...
And is it our understanding that we have a majority of the owners who are objecting?
Let's see. I believe that four of the owners today have raised objections, and that would be four of the seven that would be assessed, and there might be a letter, too, that has come in, so maybe Mr. Pierce can confirm whether that's a majority protest.
We have nine parcels.
Nine parcels, minus the two, so we have seven parcels, and you have four objections here.
Yes. And then I would like to make one comment, and that's, I noticed that in section six of the agreement, there's a holdover from the old interest rate of 7%. And of course, if this is approved, the interest rate would be the 20-year treasury. And so any motion would, I assume, include the 20-year treasury interest rate rather than the 7% number?
Is that correct, Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so then, as I understand it, it takes four-fifths of the city council to adopt this, because there is a majority protest. Is that correct, Mr. Stone?
Yes, that is.
Yes. Okay. Very good. Please cast your votes. What does it say?
3 to 2.
3 to 2, 2 against. And the 2 against?
2.
Okay, Mr. Gronky, Mr. Lopez. So then what happens now, Mr. City Attorney?
The motion fails to adopt the reimbursement agreement, and so unless there's a motion for reconsideration, there's no further action to take, and there will be no reimbursement.
Okay, let's move on. That concludes the agenda for this evening, and geez, I can't believe it. Next, we have, is there a report from the city attorney? From the city manager?
Thank you, Mayor, just that after midnight tonight, we're headed into day 72 without a state budget. We still have many unknowns, and we're continuing to lobby the state in all of its efforts to pass a budget that does not impact our finances. So far, they still are looking actively at the redevelopment dollars, and we're urging them not to do so, because of the negative impacts on the economic stimulus for our area, and ultimately, the state also. And with that, that's all I have for now.
Okay, Mr. Gronky?
I had the opportunity to have it go to a function over the weekend. The Rotary's had a function for a benefit at the Marine Base. It was a nice function, it was a really nice time, and I think they've raised quite a bit of money for the young Marines that were injured, and I thought that was a really good cause, so it was a good weekend.
Mrs. Ritter?
Mr. Campbell?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Lopez?
Nothing.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.